All right, call the meeting in order for the Lincoln County Boards. Uh, June 2nd, 2025. Tonight, there's no public comments, so we'll go ahead and ask Lincoln County FFA if they'll come forward and do our indication and our pledge for us.
We'll start off with our invocation, if you would, please pray with me, please. God heavenly Father, we come to you this hour thanking you for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us in our everyday walks of life, Lord. We thank you for this board and this committee that meets here, Lord, and we ask you to bless them with all the courage, knowledge, and wisdom that you can, Lord, to make decisions that benefit the students here in our county, to not other, to further their educations and make them the best leaders and best educated kids that you can make, Lord. We ask that you please watch over the decisions that are made tonight and all things done in your will and not ours, Lord. Please forgive us when we fail thee and save us a home with thee in the end, for this we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and tell us a little bit about what's, what y'all been doing.
Well, first off, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to come and be before you tonight. My name is Knox Rogers, I am currently serving as your 2025-2026 Lincoln County Chapter President, and I'm joined here by Lexi Bryan, your 2025-2026 Treasurer of Lincoln County FFA. And just to say a few words about what we have going on this year. We are already in the planning of the Grand Ole Tractor Day for Lincoln County, so we look forward to our forty-seventh year of that. And we would just like to say thank you for all your support, for everything that you do for us. The FFA motto is to build students, to help them in career success, personal growth, and premier leadership, and without this board, we truly couldn't do that. We're the only count, only chapter in the state that has a district-wide Greenhand Conference to get freshmen involved, not only in FFA but in agricultural education all over the board. We are the, we are the only chapter in the state this year to compete at a national competition for livestock. And all four of the students that were on that team have been offered some sort of academic scholarship to multiple schools across the country, so it has been an amazing opportunity for them to be able to travel, thanks to this board. Being so generous to help them with whatever travel needs they have. We would also just like to say thank you again for everything that you do for us. We truly cannot emphasize it enough of what all that we have going. We're already planning for the State Fair next year. We're planning for thirteen other competitions that we have done this year that we plan on carrying over into this year, such as force evaluation, land evaluation, livestock evaluation. And then we also have multiple proficiency areas for certain agricultural development areas. And so we are just looking forward to another great year. So again, thank you for your support and everything you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consider approval of minutes from May 5th, 2025 meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, jumped ahead of myself. Approve the consent agenda, anybody? All right, consider approval of reg, of the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Tomlin makes a motion, fell second. All right, that's probably my take I'm gonna make tonight. The only one. All right, all right, consent agenda. Consider approval of minutes from May 5th, 2025 meeting. Motion? Felth makes a motion, Mr. Miller seconds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Consider approval of annual agenda for board meeting calendar for 25-26 calendar year. It's been in the drive. Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Ms. Tomlin makes a motion, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Ezell, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consider approval of the following contracts as presented. If it's all right, we'll, we, if somebody don't want to pull one of those out, or if you want to approve them all, and have, uh, either Spring or Brad to talk about them, we'll just approve them all. Everybody good with that? Okay, all right, motion to approve them all?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, second. Mr. Felth, second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, consider approval of the following facility use requests. New Life Heart-to-Heart Church for Lincoln County High School, 615 to the 21st. Uh, motion to approve that?
Motion.
Mr. Miller makes a motion, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Ezell, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Uh, I don't know, if, uh, consider approval of list of teachers who will gain tenure. It's been in your drive. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, needs a second. Felth, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consider approval of the following items for school nutrition program. If it's all right, would everybody will get Ms. Spring to come up? And as she goes through these, we'll vote at them, vote on them one at a time.
Okay, so, um, one of my lovely colleagues pointed out that it's the spring show tonight, and it is not by choice, but I hope you packed your lunch this evening, no pun intended there. Um, so, there is a lot on the agenda, so I'm just gonna start and go an item at a time, and then you guys can decide, and I'll be happy to go into as much or as little detail as you would like. And the first thing on the agenda this evening, item A, is lunch plot, lunch price review and possible change in price. We are required to review our lunch prices annually. You are required to review those and decide if you want to increase them, have them remain the same. I did supply you everything that I felt like you needed to take into consideration when making this decision, including what I know some of our costs are gonna be next year, what I know our reimbursements are. I also pointed out that a lot of the funds that have historically been there through ESER and COVID funds and grants, all of that has now gone away, so a lot of the systems around us, who have used those funds to kind of offset some cost, and we've even done that to a certain extent, those have expired. And so you see my recommendation that I've made for you tonight. Um, two things to consider each year when you do this, there's something called the paid lunch equity tool. The USDA requires us to run that tool. We are not required to increase our lunch prices to what that says, as long as we have a positive fund balance. We do have a positive fund balance in school nutrition in Lincoln County. Um, if we were to follow their guidance, we would have to have a weighted lunch price, and to get there, we would have to have a lunch price of three fifty in elementary schools and three seventy-five in high school. I don't feel like that's necessary, I think we're in a good place and, um, we can take care of our families adequately on what my recommendation has been. I did recommend to you that we only raise our lunch prices by nickel for our students across the board. Um, you know, we haven't raised lunch prices in three years, the cost of goods does continue to go up, so that's my recommendation this evening to you. As far as adult meals, those do have to go up. The USDA says we cannot charge less than what the reimbursement is, um, for a paid adult lunch in our cafeterias. So that's why you see my recommendation there, um, for them as well. So the adult lunch would be four seventy-five and adult breakfast two seventy-five. So that is my recommendation.
Motion to approve?
I'll make it approve.
Ms. Tomlin makes a motion, second. Mr. Felth, second. Any discussion on, further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, perfect, thank you. Um, item B does not require any action this evening, it's for your information only. Uh, we were not able to reach an agreement with our current food service management company. Our contract said that they could give us a three point five percent increase. They, um, didn't feel like they could come back next year at even that increase, they needed to increase it much more, which would increase our cost to two dollars and ninety cents per meal equivalent. Our estimated labor cost per meal equivalent next year is gonna be two oh six. And, um, I think I put this out there for you guys, our estimated reimbursement next year is four dollars and sixty-eight cents. So you can see why taking that agreement would certainly not be in our best interest, and we would be signing up not to even break even and take care of our students in the process along the way. So, um, we were not able to do that, which leads me to item C. You have to make a choice this evening to either return to self-operation or attempt to go back and find another food service management company. My recommendation to you this evening is to return to self-operation. I feel like we can take better care of our students at the local level. Um, they have been a good partner, but I feel like, um, I feel like it's time for us to take care of our students and better meet their needs locally.
All right. Motion to approve?
So the options are find somebody else to come to an agreement with or go into self-operation, can you?
You want some elaboration?
Yeah. What's the major difference between those?
So, if we were to return, if you said, I need you to go back out and find a food service management company. Just kind of in context, the last time we did that, we start that process in October, and then it takes all the way up until March or April to go through the process formally and procure a food service management company. The state would allow us to go out under emergency purchase procedures at this time because we were unable to reach an agreement. I will tell you that the last time we did this, SFE was substantially cheaper than the other three that bid on our contract. Um, as far as returning to self-op, we already managed the labor in Lincoln County, so that kind of makes the process a little bit easier for us. I also believe that financially, we'll be better able to take care of our students as well, and perhaps provide a, um, higher quality product to our students because we won't be paying that management fee in between, we'll be managing it ourselves. What else would you like to know?
Is D tied into C?
Uh, let me go see what D is. Yes, it is.
So, D is gonna take care of C?
Yes.
So you think if you went back and tried to find another provider, that they would be greater, their bids would be greater than that three and a half percent we're trying to get that SFE to? So economically, we're gonna be better off with self-operation? Are we still better off with self-operation, given that we're gonna have to, or are we, we're gonna add a person?
Yes, that is correct, and we would, I did, I've spent a lot of time running the numbers, and I do believe we will be better off even if we add a person. It'll be less than what we're paying in a management fee.
And we feel like we can recruit a person?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Miller makes a motion, second. Mr. Felth, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
All right, um, so for item D, I am asking for one year to go from a two hundred and twenty day contract to a two hundred and sixty day contract. Um, I'm looking at working with the people in my department to pull off something in two months that normally takes six months to do. We've already been working very hard on this. Uh, we've had some great support from my colleagues in other counties who have jumped in to help us out, so I am grateful for that. And I do believe that we can get that done. It may not be perfect right out of the gate, and it may not be beautiful, um, come the first day of school, but very shortly after, I look for us to be not only where we are now, but hopefully better than we are now. And that is for one year, I, I do want to return back to my two twenty after one year.
All right. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, Mr. Felth, second. Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on.
All right, um, item E, I am asking to carry over any unused vacation days from this year to next year. I just don't know when I'm gonna get to take those, and normally we can carry over fifteen days, and I, I won't get to use vacation days, um, before June thirty, so I am asking for permission to carry those over. That does require board approval.
Motion to approve that.
Under our condition. I'll make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, needs a second. Mr. Felth, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Okay, so item F is something new. I'm asking you to approve hiring of a two hundred day school nutrition field manager to be paid at the manager level on the school nutrition program salary schedule plus five additional dollars per hour. I did include a job description in the board mail-out this month that was put out there for you. It is a very common position across, um, you know, other districts, we've not had one here for a long time. And if you look in the districts surrounding us, typically Franklin County has six people in their department. Um, if you look at, I'll go to Marshall County, they have three people, um, doing what I do with a part-time bookkeeper. And then, I mean, I could go on from there. It is doable, I have run the numbers as far as what it would cost to hire this person at that level, and I assumed that they were at the top. They topped out on the scale and they took benefits just in my, uh, budgeting purposes along the way. So I kind of budgeted for the worst-case scenario, but financially, it is doable for us to support this out of the school nutrition budget.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Felth makes a motion, second.
No, second.
Mr. Ezell, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on.
All right, um, item G, I'm asking for our school nutrition bookkeeper to go from a hundred and ten days to a hundred and twenty days. When Ms. Elwanda was here, it was a hundred and twenty days. We cut it back when I came on board, um, we felt like we could do it in a hundred and ten days because we weren't doing as many invoices and things every month. That is certainly about to change, so I am asking to put those ten days back on there for our school nutrition bookkeeper.
Motion to approve? Mr. Miller makes a motion, second. Tomlin, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
All right, item H, so in order to get things up and going for the school year next year, we have to put out what's called a food bid. So basically, I've had to sit down and anticipate any possible item that we might use next year in our department, write a spec for that, and put it out for vendors to bid on. So that has been done, we are expecting those results to come back on June sixteenth. I'm asking that you allow an executive committee to approve awarding that bid when it comes back, because I do have to sit down with whoever wins that at the, at the end of June to determine what we're gonna be serving the first quarter of our school year next year, so they can have that brought into their warehouse for us on time. So I hope you understand why even a week makes a huge difference at that point. So I'm just asking for an executive committee be allowed to approve those, or award that bid, sorry.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Tomlin makes a motion, Mr. Felth, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Okay, the last one, um, ice cream and milk, we have to bid those out separately in order to get the best price and the best service. I'm also asking for an executive committee to be allowed to award those bids once those are opened. Both of those are scheduled to be opened on June twenty-fifth.
All right, motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, Mr. Felth, second. Any further discussions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Three.
Now the real pressure starts. That's all right, we're gonna get it done.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next thing, discussion of staff EZ contract, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to discuss this contract. The reason I brought this contract up tonight is because it is due for renewal on June the thirtieth. So we have one more board meeting, I believe, on the June the twenty-third, that we can hopefully vote on this matter. You know what, sometimes when you see something that, uh, looks too good to be true, sometimes it turns out to be the case, and, uh, so, I, for the last six months, I've gone back and I've kind of researched this Staff EZ LLC private company to see exactly what it was about. Two years ago, when we voted this in the first time, I think it was back in twenty-three, uh, most, half the board members weren't here at that, but, uh, I was a part of that. And, uh, at the time, I think we were a little bit, maybe we didn't, we were, there was some misunderstanding exactly about what this Staff EZ was. Maybe, maybe it wasn't totally put out there how it was exactly gonna work. I was guilty of being under the impression that the Staff EZ was part of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, and it was part of the state laws of the state of Tennessee that deals with reemployment of staff, teachers, school bus drivers, whoever, anyone with the school system. And I was under the impression that, you know, it was, uh, it was, it was, it was in line with the Department of the Treasury, state of Tennessee. Well, come to find, during my research, I found out that, uh, these, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, the state treasury, uh, the Tennessee, uh, School Board Association, uh, didn't really know what Staff EZ was, they, they didn't, they hadn't heard of Staff EZ. So this, this private company then, it was, it was, the, the company was totally, mostly pushed by the Tennessee School Superintendent's Association. So because that there's an investigation going on, and this, this, this company is under investigation to see if they misled, uh, if they tried to skirt the laws of the state of Tennessee, and that, uh, you know, that we having to decide on this contract, and I'm, I'm asking that we, when we vote on this, that we do our, that you do your research, you look into this in the next two weeks and come to some kind of decision about how you wanna deal with, with this Staff EZ. And that's pretty much what I've, what I've got, and I would just like to have that brought up at the next board meeting, and to have a vote on whether we're gonna approve this contract or not. But I have a problem approving a contract that's under investigation.
Okay. So you're making a motion that we bring this up at the next board meeting?
For a vote, yes.
To be voted on whether it continues or not?
Right, we have, we have to do it at the next board meeting or it's automatic. If we don't vote one, you know, if we don't vote, then it automatically is for another year where we have a contract with this Staff EZ, and they're gonna be under investigation by the state the whole time.
Okay, if you make a motion, I have to have a second in order for this to pass.
So what does this consist of? Staff EZ, what are we losing? If we don't sign this contract?
We have, I think it is five employees that's on Staff. Six, I'm sorry, six.
So we'll lose those six.
If we cancel the contract, yes. Either that or they have to come back to work out of retirement, of course.
Can I ask Mr. Salles to elaborate on this?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll lose, uh, six employees, I think we had as many as, uh, over thirty employees, we're down to six now. Uh, we just had two more that, uh, went ahead and retired. Um, I understand, you know, the issues that Mr. Daniels bringing up. Um, I've spoken to the state, to myself, uh, our attorney has as well. Um, it's a third-party vendor, as well it is. So it's just, we're, the, these people don't work directly for us, they work for a third-party, it's just, it's like a staffing agency is what it is, what it is. And Mr. Daniels is right that, you know, nobody is, they're not paying into the Tennessee, you know, Consolidated Retirement System. Um, I don't think, I agree, that they didn't really know what it was, they passed a new law. I don't think the law, after I spoke to the Treasury Department, was, well, they said it wasn't intended for this. I don't think they know what to do with it. Uh, they're, they're trying to figure out how they're gonna address Staff EZ and, uh, entities like that going forward. And I think, now this is just me talking, they didn't tell me this. But I think for Staff EZ, the issue is, you know, if our people aren't paying into the retirement system, uh, then it's not, it becomes insolvent at some point, right? You gotta have people paying in for people to, to draw their retirement. Um, he's right, uh, Tennessee school, Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, they were a partner with, with our organization. Um, I have heard, uh, Staff EZ speak myself. Um, I did not, uh, bring Staff EZ to, to Marshall County. Uh, the reason I didn't do that was because I just, uh, for me, I felt like, you know, if, if we were gonna do that, um, you know, we should probably do that for everybody, or at least offer it to everybody. And up there, I had at least somewhere around twenty percent of my people that could retire. And I didn't feel good about having twenty percent of my, potentially my people on a third-party vendor. Now, there's some good things about it, because it's, it's a year to year, they lose their tenure, I mean, all that stuff's gone. Um, and it's supposed to be budget neutral, right? It shouldn't cost more than what we're, we would pay these folks anyway, and Staff EZ gets a cut out of that, they get paid off of it. Um, but for the employee side, uh, we really need these folks. Right, I, I, I need them. Now, we can all be replaced, including myself, uh, but, but we need these folks, and I would say this in defense of those people. They just took what the district gave them.
Yeah.
Right, and, and, and we offered it to them. So we offered them this option, they took it. Um, and, you know, quite frankly, I think anybody that was offered that would, would take it. So I, I have no plans of expanding it. I want to cut it off where it is, add no more people to it, uh, but grandfather them in and just stop it right there. The state has not, uh, the Department of Treasury, Mr. Roy West called me last week, he told me that they're still researching it, they, I don't know what they're gonna do with it, I, I really don't. Uh, our attorney thinks that it's, there's nothing illegal about it. He thinks they're gonna, they, the reason they haven't given me an answer yet is because they don't know. Um, so I think it's an issue for them that they're gonna have to try to address, but nothing in the way that law is written right now addresses a third-party vendor. Uh, it addresses employees who retire and come back, and they can draw seventy percent of their retirement in full pay, there's some of that in there. But nothing of, nothing talks about Staff EZ or any, really any third-party vendor. So I get the concern, I do.
Well, I'm like, I'm like Jacob, uh, these employees worked for us before, and we take care of our own. You know, I understand your concern that it, it's under investigation, but it's also we agreed to allow them to use this, so we need to really, and tonight's just a discussion. We really need to think about a timeframe in which to phase this out if we choose to do it versus just cut it off, because really and truly, we offered it to them without a, a cutoff date. So as we go through the next couple of weeks before our next meeting, I would ask that you consider So as we go through the next couple of weeks before our next meeting, I would ask that you consider thinking about that. Um, versus just telling the people that it's over. You know, that's uh, that's my thoughts on it.
So I have a couple of questions. Number one, it piggybacks what you said, we got six people of no fault of their own who've, in a contract that done nothing wrong. Um, now we, Jimmy, what's, what's, are you just wanting this to not be continued, or?
Well, the thing that I'm saying, we need, when I have a contract with this company, if they're under investigation, when we don't know what the results are gonna be, we can always go back and resign with this company again if everything is above board and the state approves it. What I'm concerned about is, what if the state TCRS, the, the state treasury decides that they've overpaid these people? Okay? They're gonna get their money back, and it, it might be kind of hard to get it back. And, and I'm, I'm, you know, and, and I wanna keep the employees, I've got no problem, but there's state laws in place that automatically tell you how you can rehire these employees back. There's a sixty-day waiting period, they can come back to this job, but that, but it's based on a percentage, there's certain laws in place, seventy percent. Uh, Jacob probably knows more about this than I do, there's certain percentages and you can work so many days, and you're on a contract that has to be renewed every year. Uh, I don't know, there, but they're just state laws, and if you wanna, I mean, I, I've got the numbers of the state laws, if anybody's interested in looking at them. But uh, you know, they have laws in place to deal with the reemployment of, of school employees, I mean, they weren't throwing them out and saying you couldn't come back. They just had laws in place, and this Staff EZ seems to circumvent the state laws of Tennessee to me. I mean, they're, they're going around the state law by, by independently hiring these people to work for them, and then they get the salary from the, from the county to pay the salary, but then they take their cut out of that. And then what are we, what are we actually getting from these people that, that they're deserving this cut? What are they doing for us? They're supposed to be recruiting, but if we're hiring the same people back that we already had, who are they recruiting? And what are they doing to justify their, their percentage salary they're getting? What, what have they done for us, is what I wanna know, I haven't seen anything they've done for us.
Yeah, it sounds like, Mr. Salles, that's not gonna continue. Um, I do understand what you're saying about, you know, but it sounds like a Staff EZ problem, like they're the ones at fault with this, they misled, they they've circumvented the law possibly.
Looking into.
Um, but I guess if you have a problem, do we have any alternatives?
So there is an alternative, I mean, and what he's saying is correct, like, so they could come back and work for us, they'd have to unretire, which you just can't, you know, can't do it in one day, but we'd have, they'd have to unretire, come back to work for us, and they could draw their full pay and seventy percent of the retirement, right? That's what he's talking about.
Right, and we wouldn't be paying this vendor a percentage of that.
He's right about that. Um, but the, it's supposed to be, and I haven't run the numbers myself to check, but budget neutral as far as whatever, like, let's just say it was me. Uh, part of my salary, I, I don't make as much because the Staff EZ cut is part of that, like the whole, the total, my total cost Staff EZ's cut i- is figured in this, so it shouldn't cost more, it should be budget neutral. Uh, the, I think as big an issue as anything is they would have to sit out sixty days, right? So they have to literally can't work for sixty days. Uh, so when I, Chuck Cagle, our attorney, made me aware of this about two weeks before I walked in here. And that was, um, I, I just, I didn't know what was gonna happen, honestly. Uh, but my biggest concern is, like, if this were all fall apart, I've got three supervisors that I'm without for sixty days, right? And that's a problem.
So what's the Staff EZ contract, is it yearly contract?
It's yearly, now, Mr. Daniel's correct about this too, it's yearly with an automatic renewal. Uh, but Ms. Putman and I have reached out and gotten them, so you have two contracts in front of you. Uh, one's the old one that has an automatic renewal, and then we actually went ahead and said, okay, we're gonna put a new one in front of you, right? And it's highlighted with some small minor changes, um, but that's, that's the new one, and it's ready for you to vote on at the next meeting. But the, but he's right, it's an automatic renewal, if we don't, um, if we don't do anything, it just automatically renews.
And you're intent to grandfather the six in?
So we had, uh, yes, that would be my, that would be my opinion of what to do with it, is just leave these folks alone. Uh, we've already lost two this year, uh, we had, I don't know if it was thirty or forty, counting all the tutors. We had, um, uh, uh, several people that, we don't have the tutors anymore, two of the teachers just, they said, you know, we're done. So we're down to six people.
Just a question of clarification, so the investigation that you're referring to is, is the same that our lawyer is, is talking about? It's, it's not an investigation of SFE, or I'm sorry, of EZ, sorry.
No, it's, I would have a formal, like, criminal investigation, that's not what it is. It's, it's really them trying to, I mean, um, you know, Chuck and I had a
Determine the impacts of the law that was passed.
They're trying to figure out, just because the law was passed, they really gotta figure out what that means.
Right.
And how does it apply to us? Because they're really trying to sit there and think, well, can we even do this?
That's right.
Because when we do it, we gotta know that we're right, and it, um, he doesn't think that they have any legal ground to make us do anything uh, at this time. And if they did, they probably would have done that already. Uh, but they keep, I mean, and they're being, they're being very kind, I mean, I was supposed to go up there and meet with them in person, we met with the, the, the state treasurer himself. Uh, that just doesn't happen every day. Uh, I mean, we were gonna meet him in person, but I had other problems, and so we met, a conference call, but, uh, I mean, they were, and they were very nice, they were, they were good to us. Uh, and anything they've asked us for, I've given them anything and everything they've asked for.
And that law applies to any third-party vendor?
Actually, they're, the, the way the law, the law doesn't say anything about a third-party vendor. Uh, we thought initially, when this new law came out, and it's about the retirement, is what it is, we thought they're talking about Staff EZ. But it really, it's really not, and they even told us that, they said this, cause we thought they were targeting Staff EZ. Uh, but they, they weren't, they told us that, they said it really wasn't, uh, targeting you, I don't think they realized it at all, honestly, until they were made aware of it, and then they're like, oh, yeah, this, we don't really know what to do with it. I, I think this honestly about as good of an assessment as I can give you, uh, right now. Uh, but I, but they, they have not given us a definitive answer on anything.
So in two weeks, are we gonna have any more information?
I do not know. We may, or, we, we may.
Sure, whatever they're looking into. They said, yeah, it may be a year before, we're not the only system dealing with this.
Right.
Right.
I don't think they knew the extent of having
They didn't know, they didn't know that such a thing existed.
Right.
So you're saying legislators passed a bill, they didn't know what they were doing?
Well, no, they were really addressing, what the, uh, I'll, I'll get the law and send it to you, they were really addressing uh, more of cleaning up the, the one hundred and seventy percent in the, their retirement, right? How we can, there's provisions for how a teacher, all this came out of COVID, is what happened, right? We can't, we can't find enough people, so they made provisions to allow people to come back, to keep them on, and like sweeten, they sweetened the pot. So that, hey, uh, you can come back out of retirement, or you can, you know, you can retire and we'll let you, uh, draw your full salary. Uh, cause it used to be, I think, a hundred percent of your retirement and eighty percent of your salary. Uh, and then they swapped it, said, hey, well, we'll let you draw a hundred percent of your salary and seventy percent of your retirement. Uh, but you gotta meet certain qualifications too. Uh, and so that's what they were trying to address. I don't think they had any intentions, or at least that's what they told me, of dealing with Staff EZ, they really didn't even know that was out there.
Right, they didn't have that.
No.
They didn't do their research.
They, they didn't, they didn't know, they didn't know that was a, an issue, and I get it from their standpoint of, you know, if everybody does this, we got a problem. Because then there's all these people that aren't paying into the retirement system, and how are we gonna pay these people that are retired, right? So I get that. Um, so it's, it's a, and again, uh, the reason I didn't use it myself, and I had no intentions of using it, uh, is just because I, I, for me, when I decide to do things, I'm like, well, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it for everybody, or we're not gonna do it. And it never made me feel comfortable knowing that twenty percent of my people there could retire, and potentially having twenty percent of my people on, working for a third-party vendor. Uh, so I just never, I mean, I just never even considered it. But, did we do anything illegal? No, I don't think we did.
Yeah, I don't know if that company did anything illegal.
Yeah, no.
They just tried to, they just found a niche and they just jumped right in there.
They, they, they're taking advantage of the rules as they are written right now.
So what is your motion exactly?
I'm just, I'm just putting a motion out that we have a vote on it, whether we're gonna approve them to keep them, or whether we're gonna terminate their contract at the next board meeting.
And, and actually
In the meantime, you do your research and you decide, and see what you, I mean, you know, it's a majority vote.
And we were, we were gonna put that in front of you anyway.
Okay, that's, yeah, if it, as long as, I mean, I just know we have to vote on it by the next board meeting, or it's ano- another year before we vote on it.
Just like we put all these other contracts in front of you, right? Some of that stuff, maybe we didn't approve in the past, and that's nothing wrong with that, I'm not saying, but I just thought, hey, just, you know, let them see it, let them approve it, there's nothing wrong with that, so we were gonna put it in front of you anyway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just having a hard time with this one, if somebody gives you a contract and you sign it, and you've done nothing wrong, why would we wanna take that away? Like, I, I'm having, if that was me personally, like, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that, so.
But that's, that's where I am with it.
But we're not continuing it, so that's, I'm, I'm talking about far, as far as new hire, for other people coming in, right?
I'm telling you right now, I have no intentions of adding one more person to it, zero.
That's my question, if we're not gonna use it anymore, why are we keeping? I mean, we can, we can take care of the six.
You're just not adding to it.
Right, right. Uh, I would say, I would, my recommendation would be just grandfather them in. Let me, just let, let, let it, let it lie, grandfather them in, and, and, and it'll phase itself out.
But we're, we're still gonna be, do you happen to have figures on how much we're paying this, even for the eight employees, how much we were paying for two years?
I can get that for you. I'll get that.
I didn't know if Jason had that or not.
We can run it.
He's back there.
He'll be able to do that in his, in his head.
He's got it, don't you?
I'll get that.
I mean, I'm just bothered by the fact we're paying a fee to a company that we could be paying to our employees.
They, they, they take a cut.
Sure they take a cut, they're a private company, that, I mean, you know, that The only problem I have is that in two weeks, it's, that don't give me any time to really make a decision, I mean, but I think we almost just gotta take it and see what happens, and go from there.
Work on something.
Say something, right, in the next year, try to figure something out, but I'm like, grandfather them in, and then it's just gonna eventually
It will.
They'll go away.
It will.
And I, I just don't think, six people, like Richard's saying, you know, it's worth haggling over six people.
Sometimes juice is just thing worth a squeeze.
Right, right. Don't think I've ever heard that, but that sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, it'll be at the next board meeting, if everybody voted on. All right, next item, discussion of Highland Realm renovations, Mr. Daniel.
Oh, I'm gonna turn that over to Jacob then to, uh,
Well, Mr. Bryant's not here.
Bryant, oh, he's not here tonight?
No, he's, he's out of town, he's on, he's on vacation, he's on vacation. We shouldn't let him go anywhere, should we? So here's, we have two drawings, uh, that's the old, the original Highland Realm building. And you can see everything here outlined in, in blue, what my recommendation would be is, um, we bid that all out, that's the renovation piece. Uh, and I would bid that out with three alternates, so like, we'll, we'll talk about an ad alternate. Right, an ad alternate just really gives you options, right? So, uh, ad alternate one is these bathrooms here in the old part of the building, renovating those. Ad alternate two is the bathrooms over by the gym, renovating those. And ad alternate three, which really isn't up here, is really right here. So in the drawings, um, this is a new office space out front of the old building. Uh, when I first saw the drawings, and I was looking at that, um, I knew we'd be pressed on cost potentially, and that's something that we don't have to have, is it nice to have, sure it is. Uh, but, so my recommendation was the main bid, three ad alternates, uh, once you've put the bids out, right? Then you know how much, you know, what's gonna cost, and then we look and see how much money we got, then we make the decisions that you wanna make, right? So it's just like buying a car with different grades, different, you know, are you gonna get the LAR, or are you gonna get the SLT, or, you know, what are you gonna get? And so you can, uh, you can decide, uh, once we have the bids out. Uh, the, the architect will be here at our next meeting in two weeks, we can ask him any and all questions. I think y'all need to approve the, the drawings, right? You approve them, we put the bids out, uh, then when the bids come back, then you decide, you know, it's what you wanna do with it, uh, based on how much money we have. You should have something in front of you that shows you how much money we have. And we have six point five million dollars for this project. Uh, out of the thirty-two point eight million dollars that the county issued in bonds, uh, we have two point two million left over. Okay? Then we have Fund One Seventy Seven, and I believe seven, eight years ago, uh, Dr. Heath, y'all started Fund One Seventy Seven. Um, and what that is, is it is a capital projects fund that gets a portion of the property tax directly into it. It's usually between one point two and one point three million dollars annually, that built up to four point three million. This year, uh, we've spent seventy-one thousand dollars out of that, so there's four point two million left in Fund One Seventy Seven. That four point two million with the leftover two point two million, uh, from the bond issue leaves us with, you know, fi- six point five million and some change. We still have lines three, three, five, three, three, six, there's a couple of other lines that are for maintenance, right? So like, when a pipe busts, uh, we, you know, that, those are other lines that Mr. Bryant uses, uh, to actually maintain our facilities. Needs a new door, need new ceiling tiles, uh, anything in the bathroom. So this Fund One Seventy Seven is actually something that I didn't have in my previous job, uh, we didn't, we didn't, it wasn't funded like that. So this is really, uh, nice, uh, to have this and to be that large, so basically, you can let that accumulate and use it for large capital projects, and you don't have to issue any bonds, right? And you just pay cash for it. Uh, but we've got, at the end of the day, six point five million dollars. So again, my recommendation would be, uh, bid it out with the alternates on there, see where it comes in, we know how much money we have, and then y'all can make the decisions you want now, and do what you wanna do with it. Uh, we believe that we should start moving, uh, next in the first of July, I believe. Uh, we're gonna have all new furniture in the new building, so it's not like we're having to move all the furniture over, so I'm not saying it's gonna be an easy move. Uh, but it, it shouldn't be as hard. Uh, the quickest we think we could ever turn this around and see any work actually done would be probably the first of September. So, I mean, the fire marshal has to approve all these drawings too, and sometimes that can be a hangup. And we talked about the renovation, what's actually gonna happen, you see all these classrooms marked in green, so what's that gonna look like? It's gonna kinda look something, uh, somewhat similar to what we did here, uh, at NGA. So we're gonna get new floors, new windows, new HVAC, new doors, uh, new ceilings, new paint, new boards, you know, smart boards. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of, uh, renovation on these older classrooms within this blue section. Uh, if we do not have all the office, uh, the new, the new construction of the office, all that will take up some classroom space, some old classroom space here, uh, but that's definitely doable. There's twenty-eight new classrooms in the new Highland Realm building, that should give us, uh, some room to grow over the next few years. So, so I'm really excited about that. I think, uh, Ms. Pickens and Mr. Bryant have done a good job of working on this, organizing it. Uh, I ask everybody to be patient with us when we start school, because I'm sure there will be some unknowns that we didn't think about, sometimes you don't know what you don't know till you get there. Uh, what questions do you have, anybody?
What, what's the three alternate, you said there's three in red?
So, uh, two bathrooms, we really, this is really wrong, right? So it really should be ad alternate three, and I would make that ad, ad alternate three. So ad alternate one is a bathroom renovation.
Okay.
Ad alternate two, bathroom Add alternate two, bathroom ren- renovation. And I would say add alternate three is this, this is all new construction. That's all new office space to the entrance of the old Highland Rim. We don't have to do that. It's nice. And if the money's there, I would say do it. But if the money's not, we'll do it. That, that would be, uh, the last thing I, I added on.
And the bathroom renovations are for?
I think we have pipes, uh, that are starting to collapse.
The stuff that we already know?
Yes, yes, that's my understanding, that we have pipes.
And would support classrooms in that area still?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So, I don't think these are as bad, but I think those are-
Those are bad.
Those, those are pretty, pretty rough. Uh, and I believe Ms. Pickens is already, they're gonna leave these empty. They're moving the kids out of those, so whatever happens, they're not gonna be in there. They're gonna move them into the new parts of the, parts that aren't being renovated. Keep those empty, so when we're ready to go, um, we're ready, they don't have to keep moving kids around. Also, Mr. Bryant, uh, I wish he was here to speak on this, but there are some issues that we've been putting off that we might have to address in the short term, so if we-
Facility issues, okay.
So, if we don't do anything, which I don't know why we wouldn't do anything, but sometimes you hate to throw good money away. I want it to come back and tear it back up.
Tear it out later?
Yes, uh, but, uh, I, I, I feel good about, uh, getting started this fall. How long all this will take, I'm not sure. This is also new construction, uh, that's the media area of the library. But you'll notice that the old gym, which is now the library, will be the cafeteria. And, uh, I forgot what that part is, but that's turning to the kitchen.
Could give Ms. Brenly to, uh, address the cafeteria deal?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Ms. Brenly?
Thought you were done.
Thought you was done, Ms. Brenly.
Um, so I guess I'm not real sure, what would you like to know?
How this, I mean, I don't know, are we, we're building a new cafeteria at, at Ohio, correct?
Yes, that is my understanding, um, we look at the plan.
Okay, I was just wondering how that was gonna affect your budget.
The cafeteria is very expensive, but that, that is all in-
It's all in this plan.
In the, yes.
Okay.
Now, does it affect her budget as far as having two cafeterias?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yes, it does. So, our overhead, people-wise, does, just for that one building instead of having one cafeteria.
And that's all built into this figure you've got?
Well, the, the, for the, the construction, the materials, uh, the non-recurring, one-time construction cost is, is built into, like, we, we can borrow, we already borrowed the money, we have the money from One Seventy-Seven. But the recurring costs-
Yeah.
Right, the recurring, the people, the recurring, every year, we're about to pay these people. That's just, when we, when we built two, essentially, two buildings with two cafeterias, we committed ourselves-
Right.
To, to increasing our personnel overhead, if that makes sense. And that's just an annual recurring expense, and that's just what it is.
You're gonna be able to drop the bus, pick up and delivery?
Well, we have a good plan for next year, um, you know, fortunately, Dr. Pickens has been great to work with and so is Mr. Bryant, so I feel like we can figure out, we'll find a way to make it work, how about that?
All right, sounds good.
So, I feel like it's a question more for Mr. Bryant, but what is his gut feeling on this six point five million gonna cover? Cause it sounds like a lot of money, but somebody's got no contract.
He, he, well, he's the one who's been handling all, you know, everything. He, he feels pretty good about it.
Okay, good.
But, you know, I, I think we're gonna have options, but you just look, you just don't ever know. You don't know until the bids come in. You just, you just really don't know.
Well, always told that about twenty percent.
Well, the longer we wait, it's just not gonna get any cheaper.
Oh, we don't need to wait.
Right, right, we need to get on with it.
So, do we need to, we voting on something to?
No, so-
Go ahead.
So, um, the architect will be here in two weeks at our next meeting. And I think at that meeting, we, any questions we have for him, Mr. Bryant will be here, they can give us any and all detail. The board needs to vote to, to, hey, we accept these drawings and we want you to bid this out with these add alternates. And then we'll, we'll send it out and we'll go. And it'll probably take, uh, a month, uh, and then we'll, we'll start, start turning. And he'll have to submit his drawing to the state fire marshal, get their approval, but that, that can all be going along with bidding.
Any other questions? All right, recognize, Mr. Nick's presenting financial report. You've been very patient sitting in the back.
Very patient. Uh, good evening, um, got a little bit on my agenda tonight. Well, I'll start with the one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments, that, got a few tonight. First one is for, uh, three hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and sixty-five cents, that's revised year-end budget for payroll estimates. Next one is for eighty thousand dollars even, that's, uh, budget donor restrictions from the Booster Club, the Coach's, uh, supplements. Next is, uh, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars budget estimates for the PPL, which is the paid parental leave, uh, showing payroll and revenue, um, estimates reflecting what has been requested reimbursed from the state E-plan. Next is for twenty-five dollars, that is a budget revision for E-plan approved through the LEAP state grant. Next one's for nine thousand nine hundred dollar, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. That's a budget re- uh, revision that reflects the project raised grant from UT and the state. Next one is fourteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars, sixty-five cents. It's a budget revision that reflects the, uh, funds expended for the one forty-two ester by moving expenditures from one forty-one to the one forty-two ester and completing those expanded lines in the one forty-two ester. Um, next one is four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars, uh, to reflect donations received from the Family Resource Center for their Angel Tree. Next is twenty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, budget revision number one to the E-plan State Special Education Preschool Grant. Next one, and the last one is for, uh, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars. That's a budget revision for year-end payroll estimates for the special education program, and that's all I have for the one forty-one.
Motion to approve. Mr. Miller makes a motion, Mr. Tomma second, all in favor say aye, and you poll.
Uh, next is the one forty-two sc- uh, School Federal Programs Fund Budget Amendments. I have one for you, it's five thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars, twenty cents. Budget revision number four to the E-plan Title II Federal Grant Budget based on the, uh, reviewing payroll estimates through this, into this fiscal year, and that's all I have for the one forty-two.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Phil makes a motion, Mr. Tomma second, all in favor say aye, and you poll.
Okay, next is the one forty-three centralized cafeteria program budget amendment, it's nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars. It's also a year-end payroll, um, that, that's it, a year-end payroll. That's all for the one forty-three.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mr. Ezell makes a motion, second.
Second.
Phil, second, all in favor say aye, and you poll.
Next, the one seventy-seven Education Capital Projects Fund Budget Amendment. It's a, obvi- obviously, it's cleanup, it's five million, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, budget meant to, to revise the original budget estimates in preparation for the remaining expenses that will occur through this fiscal year for, for Highland Rim.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mr. Tomma makes a motion, second. Miller, second, all in favor say aye, and you poll.
All right, next is, this is actually the one forty-two School Federal Programs Fund, it's the preliminary bu- preliminary budgets for next twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Um, we said that we were gonna probably wait till next time, but Jackie got it done, so we just thought we might as well put it out here. So, I'll go in, go in order here. Uh, first one is ten thousand, six hundred eleven dollars, thirty-four cents to set up the approved E-plan preliminary budget for the consolidated administration for twenty-five, twenty-six. Next is for seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty-one cents, uh, state-approved E-plan preliminary budget Title I. Next is one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six, six hundred eighty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents, state planned, uh, E-plan preliminary budget for Title II A. Next is ten thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars, seventy-six cents, preliminary budget for Title III. Fifty-nine, next one's fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars, fourteen cents, preliminary budget for Title IV. Next one, seventy-four thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars, eighteen cents for the CTE Perkins, uh, Basic. Next was one million, forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, that is the preliminary budget for the IDEA, twenty, Part B. Next one, forty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, um, preliminary budget for IDEA preschool. And that is all I have for the preliminary budget for the one forty-two fund for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Phil makes a motion, second. Mr. Tomma, second, all in favor say aye, and you poll.
And lastly, I present to you the, uh, May financials for the one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-six, and one seventy-seven funds.
All right, motion to approve those. Miller makes a motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Ezell, second, all in favor say aye, and you poll. Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Points of information, um, summer retreat discussion. Uh, anybody have any recommendations on a date for that? What typical timeframe do we normally do that in?
It varies. Sorry.
You're supposed to keep me straight.
It's a hard job sometimes.
I guarantee you it is.
So, in the past, we've done one night, two nights, an all-day Saturday. It just kinda depends on what, what you have on the agenda, what kind of topics you want to cover, what Mr. Sorrells wants to present as well.
Got any recommendations, one night, two nights, Saturday?
Um, well, really, I, I think we can hammer it out in one night. Or a Saturday morning, I think, uh, the issues with Saturdays now, as people are busy, Saturdays probably work better in the, in the winter, it's kinda cooped up. So, I would think, uh, I would recommend a, a night. What, what month are we talking about?
Kedoo.
July, July? We don't have a board meeting in July, right?
So, the July meeting is ac- will actually be June twenty-third, and then the next meeting after that is in early August, I believe it's, I believe it's August the fourth.
Fourth is the Monday, yeah, August fourth.
Do we need to have it before the school year starts?
I would think so. So, what about the fourteenth, the twenty-first, just keep it in?
July.
July.
What day, what day of the week is that?
That's a Monday, just keeping in with Mondays.
Just keep it on a Monday, fine with me.
Everybody good with July fourteenth?
So far as I know, I'm okay.
Yep.
All right, that's what it'll be, July fourteenth.
Start at five, five-thirty.
What time are we looking?
What time's good for everybody? Earlier the better, or, you're teaching a class there in summer? Okay, five o'clock, all right?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Gonna eat?
We should.
Yeah.
Yes.
They get to feed the sun, not eat. All right. Recognitions for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar year discussion. Um, been brought to our attention, or to mine anyway, to, um, maybe do a little changing on the recognitions, instead of retirees, maybe recognize students and clubs or someone for outstanding work in general. What is y'all's thoughts on it?
I don't know why we can't do both.
You mean, within a meeting?
Or alten- or alternator, you know.
Do a retiree and recognizing the student, the same person, just the same board member, do it the same night?
I mean, you-
Is that what you're saying?
I mean, it don't have to be the same board person, it can be different.
Oh, locate board people.
I was thinking administrations do the recognition for our students and our clubs. They're more involved with them than what we typically are. They know what goes on within our schools. Um, I, I'm good either way. I mean, I just know now it's, it's getting harder to find people that's retired from our, our organization that's not already been recognized, so.
It's just personal for me, cause I have a lot of teachers still, I know that I wanna recognize, so, you know, but I'll go, what, you know, whatever.
Why can't we not recognize if they hadn't been retired?
If they taught you, we should recognize them.
I agree.
I mean, yeah, I agree, I, I mean, I, we're not gonna know a whole lot about what student organizations unless somebody's gonna give us about a two-week's notice so we can figure out what we're gonna be talking about, otherwise, I'm not gonna have a clue. But, you know, teachers, if they wanna, you know, if you wanna change what teachers are recognized, I don't have a problem with that.
I do think it's good for students to be here and experience this and be recognized too, so, I mean, that's why I'm kinda like-
Well, the thing of it is, is, is a lot of people in our community don't really realize what the board here does every meeting. And throughout our retreats and stuff that we have. And by allowing the students and clubs to come in here and recognizing them, it also brings the parents in to learn a little bit more about what we do and how we do things. So, that's just one of my thoughts about it. I, I'm good either way, but I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm all about our students and, and recognizing them and for what their accomplishments are.
Yeah, I'm all about the kids getting recognized. Also, I mean, not just your, I don't know, what's the good word for it, you know, good kids, you know? I think you can use this to help, you know, motivate kids.
Most approved, so.
Right, I mean, it could be, you know, so, I mean, and I don't know, I've never been, of course, part of this, I don't know what the retirement thing looks like, you know? For me, if I'm retired, I'm retired, I don't necessarily need recognizing, but I kinda like, would like to fade out. But, that's my part of my job. But, you know, I would, I would really like to see the kids, like you said, get recognized.
I, I just know personally that I see a lot of our kids accomplish things that don't actually get to come before this board to be recognized or acknowledged for their accomplishment that represent us in our county, so that's just my thoughts. I mean, I'm good recognizing retired educators as well, but-
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, these kids don't get where they are without teachers, so.
You're right, you're right.
You know, that's, that's why it's important. I agree with you a hundred percent. I just think we do both, that's my opinion, but.
Did you, now, you, you brought up about the kids, right? Did they do that at Wood Marshall Camp? What'd you do?
So, I would just tell the principals, look, give me somebody up here to recognize, and I didn't make, I didn't, I just, you tell me. And they would bring, we'd ha- we'd have a lot of little kids, uh, for-
Which brings in families.
Right, yeah, yeah, and just, when you see the little kids come in, I always liked it because I thought, a lot of times, you have board members are just dealing with numbers and stuff and things, and when you get to see the kids come in, it's like, okay, you know, we, we, we're, thi- this is good. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm helping, uh, these kids too, and, and look, it's great because, um, the little kids, a lot of times it'd be like they scored a perfect score on their TCAT reading. Uh, or the high school kids, you had a perfect score on the English portion of their ACT. Uh, I didn't, I never set parameters ar- I just told the principals, I need some kids up here. You recognize some kids and for what, and we had kids that, uh, might've called nine-one-one or went and got the, uh, the simulator, you know, just stuff like that too. Or, you know, like Mr. Miller said, they, sometimes it was just they went up so many points, uh, from one test, from their first A's web to their second A's web. Um, you know, so, it's just things like that. It wasn't, and look, here's the good thing. I've already written this down for July fourteenth. We can hammer this all out on July fourteenth.
Absolutely. Y'all good with that?
I would like to break, not some of the CTE stuff if we do.
Yeah.
Because after touring it, I don't think anybody here realized what we have. I don't think anybody realized what's back in this.
Spotlight it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was amazed, you know, as an engineer, I was amazed.
Me too.
Well, it's just a thought, but, I mean, you could do it to the students, but if you, could we possibly recognize some retired educators during our retreats, instead of maybe the board meetings? Just a thought that we can talk about on fourteenth. All right, let me go back to this computer. Executive committee approved the facility use of, uh, Linky County High School Veterans Advisory. And we also approved for the summer learning budget, uh, that had to be approved pretty quickly, uh, with the thought you- Uh, Mr. Thaw, you wanna elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, so, we actually, the state was late getting our summer camp money to us. So, like, our kids are in summer camp right now. Uh, they were late getting it to us, uh, so, uh, we had to approve it, uh, by executive committee. And then, uh, Mr. Nix had to read it from the floor at the commission meeting, uh, to get it approved by the commission. So, no fault of ours, it was just, it was just, they were just late getting it to us. So, because we meet so early in the month, it, it created us an issue this time. But it's all good, we got it.
And the last one that the executive committee approved was a blanket facility use for the ac- athletic summer camp that started last week, I think it was.
Yes, sir, uh, so the so- the coaches are actually renting, uh, the, the facilities from us to do their summer camps. And so, we made them do the, uh, use of facilities for them, so, uh, we had to approve that. I would recommend and request, um, in the future that maybe we just give the facilities use as a, uh, item of, you know, just, y'all see it, we'll give you anything and everything, but you, you shouldn't have to approve it. It, it, it's slowing the process down. I think as long as the principal and, and I agree to it, I think that's enough, and we'll, we'll show you all of them. But, you know, that's a potential policy change I would recommend.
Can we, uh, put that on next board meeting to?
Well, funny you mention that. We need a policy committee meeting, uh, eh, for our next, uh, I would request one, uh, for our next, before our next board meeting. Just thirty minutes. And, and I would expect us to probably need a policy committee meeting for the next two or three. But, because all the laws that just passed, Tennessee School Board Association's about to start sending us out model policies and changes. Uh, so that's fixing to start happening.
Mr. Miller?
Oh, sure. I might be the to do.
All right, uh, directors up there?
Um, so, I would like to form, can we have a, can we set a policy committee meeting? I mean, five o'clock, y'all okay with that?
Sure, I'm good with that.
Five, five o'clock, five o'clock, yes, sir.
Maybe on June twenty-third.
June twenty-third, five o'clock.
That's the next board meeting.
Policy. Um, if anyone is interested in being the principal at South Lincoln, uh, I sure would like to talk to you. Uh, so, that job posting comes down on Friday, uh, please apply. I like to interview lots of people. Uh, I'll take, we penciled in the day of, uh, I think the eleventh to do the interviews, and, you know, I'll sit in here all day and interview. Uh, so, even if you feel like, oh, well, you know, I probably don't have a, you wanna, you don't ever know. I'm telling you, you don't ever know. Uh, so, please apply. Uh, I'm interested in talking to as many people as I can talk to. Uh, also, I would just like to say, thank you, Ms. Brenly. Um, I don't think we really understand the big lift that she's making right now. This is not, this doesn't happen every day. Um, this is a big lift, she's working really hard. I think she was pretty frustrated when it first happened, but I haven't seen anything but smiles since then. And she's had a great attitude, and I just appreciate the work that you're doing to, to, to lift us up, and, um, it's just, I don't think we need to take that for granted. It's, it's a bi- it's a big deal. It's not easy, so, thank you. I'm good, thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else have anything they wanna bring up?
I would like, just to check and see how the two thousand dollars for the, the bonus, do you know if that's on track?
Uh, it, so, we actually talked about that today. Um, Ms. Tomlin, what information do you have on that?
Well, what do you wanna know?
Well, so, we're on track, we're checking, and, uh, we're talking to the state. Uh, everybody, all the teachers are supposed to get two thousand dollar bonus. That won't come into their check until July, correct?
Well, what did you say, Jason, about when it might come?
We don't know, honestly.
We're doing all we can to-
They just haven't said the money.
There was a time period where they sent them names or something.
They're still sending us, there's, there, once a month, they're sending us a list of names, and they're saying, check these to make sure they're right. And we were actually struggling recently trying to get them to understand that we're, we're trying to change these things, we're trying to make some adjustments, please help us do this. Uh, so, we're, we are working on it to make sure it's correct on our end. Uh, the, we're just really a pass-through. So, all this is just passing from the state to finance, out to our teachers. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct, no, this, this-
There are stipulations, as far as you say teachers, but there are stipulations as far as everybody's got to, about the hundred twenty days and then the fourth and the whole year, and there, there are stipulations to it, but pretty much everybody's there.
As long as the state comes in with their end of it, which won't be till July, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start with that.
And they're also paying, it's actually more than two thousand dollars a piece the state's giving us. They're trying to give us some of the fixed costs, so it won't-
They're supposed to be sending, um, our, the school sub-district side of TCRS, um, taxes, Medicare, all that on our side now. When that check hits, so when they, that'll be our side, the, the employee will have to pay their side of that piece too. So, it won't be a flat two thousand in the account, it'll be minus, just like normally thing, so. As long as it co- if, it depends on when it comes, um, my, I've told them at their supervisor meeting that I would love to see if it came in early, that we could do a special payroll to those that are on that final list, which that final list drops June fifteenth. If that, if, whatever that list happens from the state they give to us, that's the dr- that's, that's who will get paid, um, through finance, so. I would love to see it happen in July because everybody's heard it's coming in July, so I would like to make sure it happens in July. As long as it all falls from the state to, to us first, obviously.
Cause y'all, y'all gonna be the ones to look back.
Yeah, it's gonna look like we didn't pay you if we didn't, but that may not be the case. If it comes July twentieth, I can't promise it's gonna come in July. Um, you know what I'm saying, so, but I would like to see a special payroll, and I've talked to my lady, I think I'm gonna pull that off regardless, no matter when it actually hits in the account. We're, we're getting ready, we're, yeah, we're, main thing first is this, is these reports. They, they had one on April the fifteenth, another one May the fifteenth, so now we're between reports. June the fifteenth is the last one, um, and then we'll know who we're paying, at least.
No administrators, no central office-
Oh, I'm sorry, June twentieth.
Strictly teachers.
No support staff, strictly teachers, people that are supposed to spend majority of their day with-
In direct contact with students.
In direct contact with children.
That's one of the-
Teachers licensed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn. Phil makes a motion, second. Ms. Tomlin makes a second. All in favor say aye.